Hey, I'd like to welcome everybody. My name is Tom Last. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Grass Valley. I'd like to welcome to our public meeting on the Gold Country Coalition Brownfield Assessment Grant Meeting. And just a couple logistical things. If you need restrooms or down the hallway, we also have snacks and a sign-in in the foyer, so please sign in either, you know, before you leave if you haven't done so already. This is being live broadcast, and after it's broadcast will be put on the city's website, so people can go and revisit this wonderful meeting if you would like to. So that will be on. So this coalition grant is, the coalition meaning there's the partners of the City of Grass Valley, Nevada City and Nevada County. We came together in early 2017 to look at applying for an Environmental Protection Agency grant, and the intent of that was to continue with some of the success we've had in the past of preparing site assessments or cleanup plans for properties within our jurisdictions and in the immediate area of the cities. So in 2017, again, we applied for the grant, and we found, and we ended up receiving that grant. It was almost $600,000, just a little shy of that. And what we'll do, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to walk through where we're going to be going. I'll walk through the agenda real briefly. So after myself, I'm going to introduce the mayor. He has a few comments. Izzy Martin will speak. I'll introduce her, and I have a few comments to introduce her. Then we'll get into our consultant team, both Jason and Jim, Jason Muir and Jim Brake. They will go through the PowerPoint presentation discussing what an EPA assessment grant is and what we hope to accomplish through this process. And then at the end of that, about seven, 10 or so, we hope to have, there'll be an opportunity for public comments and questions that you may have. Since we are being broadcast, we don't have a roving mic, so when we have the opportunity for public comments or if you have questions, please come up to the podium, and that just helps us out with the recording effort. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the mayor, and he has a few comments to make, and then I'll be back after that.
Well, this astounds me that I'm the mayor. Hi, I'm Howard Levine, longtime involved person and currently the mayor of Grass Valley. How astonishing. Anyhow, I want to welcome you, and thank you for spending your evening here, or at least an hour of your time. So the exciting things for me about this is, number one, the collaboration. As we move forward in our new world of government and nonprofits, we need to bring people together. And for us, working, we had a big city council meeting last night, and working with Nevada City, they should be, hopefully, approving a few things that we approved last night, and that brings us closer together. So moving with the county, this is an opportunity for us to create a shared vocabulary and work together to find opportunities to improve and remove these brownfields that we have in our community, and hopefully be able to put them to use if appropriate. So I think it is something that is very needed to work together, and I'm hoping that when we look at issues about housing and infill as we have in our general plan, this becomes an opportunity for us to continue to have a dialogue with each of those entities. So it's a pleasure to move forward, as I said, in this direction, and want to thank Sierra Fund for bringing us snacks and helping put this together, and for everybody, I wish they all worked together and have good faith in finding solutions to some of this property that is currently unusable. So thanks very much.
Okay, a few comments. I'm going to with an introduction for Elizabeth Izzy Martin. She is the CEO of the Sierra Fund, which is a nonprofit organization based in Nevada City, and their mission is to restore ecosystems and community resilience in the Sierra Nevada foothills, and the Sierra foothills are the Sierra Nevada community. Izzy is a community organizer, an environmental advocate, with over 30 years of experience working in rural communities to promote economic and environmental justice. As head of the Sierra Fund, she has helped secure more than $90 million to improve water quality and support conservation in the region. And she has worked for more than 10 years to raise awareness around the identity solutions, or in identify solutions to lasting environmental, cultural, human health, and human health impacts in the gold rush, California Gold Rush area. So Izzy, I'd like to welcome her. She's one of the partners in this grant with us.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to see people engaged in their community. Thank you for coming out tonight. The Sierra Fund, as Tom said, is working to restore ecosystem and community resiliency to our meadows, our forests, our rivers, our fish, and our communities from the lasting impacts of the Gold Rush. Of course, we know the good impacts because we're all sitting here in the town of Grass Valley and have created a community here, but there are these cultural, environmental, and health lasting impacts. The Sierra Fund does our work by understanding what the problem is that we're facing, bringing the best people we know, smartest people, whether we agree with them or not, to the table together. So in facing the impacts of mining, we work with the mining industry, who know more about mining than anybody else and how to clean it up. We work with environmental engineering firms like Holdridge and Cole, the governments. We work with tribal entities, I see Nevada City Renteria here tonight, trying to get a good grip of understanding of what are the problems, what are the opportunities, and what do we need to know. So sometimes we identify data gaps, and we go out and do scientific evaluation to fill those data gaps. Sometimes we understand that there's just holes in policy, and we try to figure out how to fill those holes. What would be a right way to approach this in the absence of law? When we create these best ideas, best protocols, working with our partners, we then take them across the landscape. And so that's the arc of our work. That's our strategic approach. This one is a great little project because first, it's our home base. I'll walk home from here. I live two blocks from here. It's an example of good government doing good work. It's public-private partnership with environmental engineering firms locally, our local guys, not somebody coming in from the other side of the planet. It's community partners engaged, and it really is going to give us an idea of how to identify and assess and evaluate and prioritize and clean up these fields in our, brownfields in our community. One of my favorite outcomes of the first, one of the series of these that was done, was people that had owned property for a long time had been frightened because they knew that maybe somebody sometime had done something that was going to be toxic and a lasting impact, and they were scared. And after the evaluation was done, it turned out almost every property that was evaluated was cleared for development. It wasn't the scary, scary outcome that we were all expecting. So this is just a great night. It's a great example. I'm dying to hear what the guys are going to tell us next. So thank you. I want to call out our wonderful staff, Kelsey Westfall, Greg Thrush, who help us do outreach. If you have questions about the Sierra Fund's programs, we were engaged with state parks up at Malakoff Diggings, helping them with their little tiny mercury problem, and we're working with Nevada Irrigation District on a different aspect of that mercury problem. So we are very, very involved in our community, and we welcome your input. Thanks, you guys.
Okay, now on to the main show. So we have two speakers. Jason Muir, he is an associate engineer with NV5, which used to be Holdridge and Cole, the local firm out of Nevada City. So they've changed names, but they are still here local, and it's still Jason. His name has not changed, the company name. And also Jim Brake, he's a senior engineer, geologist, and also vice president of GeoCon, and their firm helped us out with the 2012 and 13 grant. They took the lead, and Jason's firm kind of was backup. They're reversing roles this time, where NV5 is basically taking the lead, and then Jim is providing technical assistance and support throughout this process. A very complex process, working with the federal government and also the State Department of Toxic and Substances Control. So their state and federal agencies we're working with on this, and they've both done an excellent job with our previous grants, and we're very happy to have them as part of our team, in addition to Sierra Fund and some of the other subconsultants which they will walk through. So Jim and Jason, I'm going to have them come up. They have a PowerPoint presentation, and again, after that, we'll have some time for questions and answers for you.
Thanks, Tom. I'm Jason Muir, and I'm the engineer, and Jim is the geologist. We're running the program. We're the consultants that, you know, do the technical assessment. I think we have almost 50 years between the two of us of speaking in acronyms, so I'm going to try not to use too many of those tonight because it gets a little much. We're going to talk about the Brownfields Grant Program in general, and we're going to highlight the recent grants that we're just wrapping up and the new one that's coming up. So first of all, we want to pose a couple of basic questions and talk about them a little bit. What is a brownfield site? It's a property that is or may be impacted by a hazardous substance or petroleum product or some other kind of contaminant. It doesn't mean that it is contaminated. It means that it is, it's a possibility. And so there's a question out there that we want to answer. Can this be developed without any cleanup? Does it need cleanup? And the idea is to do the assessment so we can remove that encumbrance and put the land back to work. You want to take this one, Jim?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Jason. So just a little bit about, you may be wondering why we have two consultants on the project instead of just one. I think we're a great combination, a great marriage, if you will, of skills and expertise. Jason said he's the civil engineer, the environmental engineer. I'm a geologist. We've both been practicing in this arena forever. And I come from, not way far away, the other side of the planet, but I come from Sacramento. Wow, way down the hill. But I've been practicing in the Brownfields Arena literally my entire career, back before it was called Brownfields, but it's exactly what we were doing back in the 80s. But, and then the Brownfields Grant Program with, from the US EPA started late 90s, early 2000s, or really got rolling then. And so I bring that long history with this grant program. Jason and I do essentially the same type of work. Jason's from here. Jason knows the properties. Jason knows the people. So it's a great combination of our combined experience and the local knowledge here, so that's why we're both here together. And we got brought together on the previous grants, and it's worked out fantastic. As a matter of fact, I just, sometimes I feel like calling Jason, "Hey, can you take this project?" And then I forget, oh, wait, he works for a different company. Yeah, I just want to give work to him. And we actually do that. We collaborate quite a bit. So anyway, what is the grant program? US EPA has a number of grant programs that are targeted towards brownfields, which essentially means a contaminated, potentially contaminated property. The main two that we deal with are the assessment grants, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. That means to assess properties, to figure out if they're contaminated, and if they are, what to do about them. They also have cleanup grant programs, and that's the money that actually goes towards just fixing the problem if a problem exists. So on the assessment grant, basically, I want to give you a real quick overall statement. What does assessment and cleanup mean? Because in the world that Jason and I practice in, it's very complex, and like he said, there's a bazillion acronyms that we could start saying and assuming somebody will know what we're talking about. But really, there's, it boils down to, what's the first thing you do on a property? It's like, what was the past use of this property? What's the current use of the property? That's the initial environmental assessment. And did any of those uses, past or present, have the potential to cause a contamination problem? And then if we decide through that initial assessment process, yeah, something could have happened here, or yeah, for sure, something could have contaminated this property. Then we do the next phase of assessment, which, and we're going to talk more detail about some of these as we move through the slides, that we actually test, and we say, are those contaminants here that we suspect might be? And then if they are, we, our next question is, are they a threat to anybody's health? Are they a threat to the environment? And so it's kind of a flow diagram. And if no, even though contaminants might be there, they might be at such low concentrations, they're not a threat to anybody or anything in the environment, or yes, they are, and we ought to do something about it, then we actually plan what to do about it. So through this grant program, we do all those stages, from the initial assessment to the figuring out if there's contamination and how bad it is. Will it affect anybody or anything in the environment? And then what to do about it. We don't do the cleanup, but we take a property that comes into this program, we take it all the way through the process for initial assessment, through planning how to fix the problem, and then, that's a huge part of this process. And then the cleanup will come after that if it's necessary. So let's march through the slides now, and we can tell you more about some of the successes we've had and what we plan to do with this grant.
One more question for you. How does it benefit us? How does it help our community? The funding from US EPA is intended to catalyze smart redevelopment, to get us together like we are in this room, to get the agencies together, and to strategize. How do we want to use this funding? What's most beneficial to clean up? What properties do we want to get back on the tax roll and back in use? And how can we attract investment in our neighborhoods? How can we fill in those empty lots that have been sitting there for years? And so that's, that's why we're here. That process, the planning process and the regulatory review process can be very bureaucratic. And so if we can get an approved cleanup plan for these properties, or if we can just clear them without a cleanup plan, then we're far ahead, and people will know, okay, I don't have to spend any money on that, or I have an approved cleanup plan that's going to cost this much to do, and so you can have smart plan development. So Tom mentioned this, the Gold Country Coalition is the City of Grass Valley, the City of Nevada City, and the County of Nevada. The City of Grass Valley is the grant recipient and is leading the charge on this one. EPA is the funding agency, and we've worked very closely with Eric Bayous. He couldn't be here tonight. He works out of San Francisco, but he's been a big help in making all of this possible. So we really appreciate working with him. The consultant team is Jim and I, and Brian and Jeff in the audience. Like Tom mentioned, I'm with NV5. Jim is with GeoCon, and we're the prime consultants on the project. Sierra Streams Institute is also doing site assessment based on their intimate knowledge of mine sites in the Nevada City area, and Kyle Leach is leading that. And then, of course, the Sierra Fund is doing all of our public outreach, and they planned this great meeting, and we're really happy to have them on board, too. We also have community partners, the Nisanon Tribe, Habitat for Humanity, the Contractors Association, the Business and Career Network, and Chambers of Commerce. And these folks supported us in our grant application, and they wrote letters of support, and we're glad to have them on board. And we will be working with our partners and with other community organizations for input on how to spend this funding. We have a great record of success, and not just NV5 and GeoCon, but other folks in the area. It started with Friends of Deer Creek in 2006, with the Nevada City Community Wide Assessment. That assessment spurred three cleanup grants and a couple of more mine land assessments in Nevada City, the Stiles Mill, Providence Mine, Providence Mill Site, and Kyle has, with Sierra Streams, has been most recently working on those. The first EPA Brownfields Grant in Grass Valley was 2009, and we'll be talking about the follow-up grants, the 2012 and 13, and then, of course, the one that we just got. And another one was Yuba River Charter School. I know everybody's seen the new campus. The parking area at the new charter school campus was an old burn dump, and it was pretty highly contaminated with lead. And the school was able to go after a EPA cleanup grant, and so we performed the engineering on that cleanup, and now it's a new school. So it's a big success story. The 2012 site-specific grant that was awarded to Grass Valley is one that we primarily H&amp;K, NV5 worked on under the GeoCon contract. We assessed 11 acres of property on the, right between South Auburn Street and the Empire Mine State Park, and we have a cleanup plan that's not yet published because it still needs some more ecological assessment, but it's going to allow for residential and commercial development of that property. It addresses historical gold mining impact and also some soil impact from lead paint because there were old structures on the frontage there that need some soil removal. And so I'm going to talk about this site, just to give everybody an update on where we are with this. You can see the blue circle there between Highway 49 and the state park. That's where the property is located. The property used to be, it used to be known as the Village at South Auburn proposed development back in the, oh, 2005 era, and there was a lot of money spent on an EIR and planning for this development. And then the economy turned south, and it was sold to multiple owners, and so we assessed it in that state. And the primary environmental condition on this property is that it's located downstream of the historical Stacy Lane Pond, which is a mill pond associated with the old Empire Mine. And so the blue arrow is pointing to where the pond is. And there's a seasonal drainage course that comes down and drains into a wetland. And so in the mining era, we had tailings that would drain down here during storm events and collect in the wetland. And now there's a, there's a big rock dam at the tailing pond. And so we're not getting more tailings onto the property, but we needed to assess what to do with the wetland. And that's a picture of the wetland. It's a pretty spot, but it has a lot of blackberries. We excavated over 50 exploratory trenches and took soil samples and did human health and ecological risk assessment, and came up with a cleanup plan. It focused on what you see behind Brian here in this trench, that little layer of orange and gray sand, basically. And that is tailings from the stamp mill. So you had gold ore, and you ran it through a stamp mill, and it comes out as fine sand. It washed into the tailings pond, and then it washed down into the wetland. And that's just a little layer. You can kind of see it up close here, basically what it looks like. In the, in the middle of the wetland, there's quite a bit more, you know, three to six feet of the stuff. And so there's too, there's too much there really to economically remove and haul to a landfill. And so the cleanup plan is outlining how to leave it in place under a land use covenant, basically a deed restriction, that would be protective of human health because you wouldn't, you wouldn't be allowed to go and dig holes in it, right? And so that was the main environmental condition. The other one is, there's shallow impacted soil on parts of the property, just based on its proximity to the mine sites. And so we've addressed that as well, just by planning to remove shallow soil from certain areas. And then also, as I mentioned, the lead paint around the old building foundations. And that's pretty common, you know, it's not an unusual condition, so that has to be addressed as well. It's not approved yet. The Department of Toxics reviewed the plan. They agreed with everything, except they want more ecological testing in the wetland. They are looking for some more reassurance that the bug-eating birds basically aren't affected by the mercury remaining in the wetlands. And so we need to go out there and test the bugs for mercury and demonstrate whether or not it's going to be okay to leave it in place. And so we're hoping to do that this coming year as part of the new grant. And the other thing that we want to talk about is the Community Wide Assessment Grant that's just wrapping up, and I'm going to hand it over to Jim because he's the primary consultant on this one.
So the Community Wide Assessment Grant that the city got in 2013 was really designed to build upon the success of the previous Community Wide Assessment Grant, which, if you recall from the previous list, was the 2009 grant. 2009 grant had a lot of success of evaluating properties, but these grants have lifetimes and funding limits, and basically you run out of time and you run out of money, but the city did a great job of getting another grant for 2013 so we could keep charging ahead because there were still more properties to evaluate. So we were able to do, and I'm going to have to talk real quickly about the types of assessment again that we do, because essentially, there's five different things that you can do with an assessment grant. Number one, you can develop an inventory of properties in your community that you think you want to assess. And it's meetings like this that help potentially contribute to that inventory, because if any of you are property owners, or you have friends and neighbors that are property owners in the community, you may have a property or know of a property that might be a good candidate for this program. So that's one of the reasons we do this, not just to tell you about it, but it's actually to kind of solicit, hey, if you have a property that you are concerned about, or you know something about, and you want help figuring out the answers to that problem, we can maybe assess it through this grant program. The second thing that you can do is you can do what are called Phase One Environmental Site Assessments. Remember I said, we do everything from the initial assessment to the cleanup planning under these grants. Well, the initial assessment is the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment Process. That's looking at the current and past last land use of a property. What are the available regulatory records? What are the historical records? You go out and you do a site visit, and you look at the ground, and you see what the potential problems might be. And then you conclude in one of these assessments, are there conditions of concern or what we call recognized environmental conditions? Is, are there any of those on the property or not? And then we can go to the next stage, which are Phase Two Environmental Site Assessments. That's where we actually go back to the property where we said, yeah, we think there's a problem here, and we actually collect samples, whether that's soil, or soil vapor, or groundwater, or sediment, or surface water, or groundwater, whichever media we think is, might be contaminated. And we actually collect samples and have them analyzed by, uh-oh, there we go, chemical laboratories. Sorry. And then, and we, and then we can say, yes, there's a problem or not on the site. And then from a Phase Two ESA, we can, we can do something called a Preliminary Endangerment Assessment. That's just a more robust assessment, and we also can assess risk. Is there a health risk for humans? Is there an ecological risk for ecological receptors and the environment, that sort of thing? And then lastly, we can do actual cleanup planning. We did one under this last grant, called a Removal Action Work Plan. That's just an official title for a cleanup plan, and it's something we would give to an agency like the Department of Toxics and say, please review this, and once we all agree, it can be finalized. That kind of a document, Removal Action Work Plan, actually would go out to the community as well, and the community would have 30 days to review it and comment on it as well. So just in summary, that's what we've done with the 2013 Assessment Grant. And it's just the area that we assess, the Grass Valley community and outlying areas. And we actually did 12 Phase One ESAs of 12 properties throughout the site. Some of these are small properties. Some of them are big former mining properties. And... And after doing these Phase One Environmental Site Assessments, and then Phase Two Environmental Site Assessments on eight of them, because eight of them warranted further assessment. And this is just showing all the different sites, the two preliminary endangerment assessments and one Removal Action Work Plan. Eight of those sites were able to be cleared just through this process. There's no problem at these sites. They're ready for redevelopment. And that, we have to remember, that's the whole basis of this program. It's to assess perceived or known environmental issues on a property so that it can be put to better use. So, out of the 12 sites that we assess this program, eight are clear. They're good to go for redevelopment if that's what the owners want to proceed with. And with that...
You want to talk about the grant going forward? So, the other four that weren't cleared are candidates for additional assessment under this new grant. And we are pursuing that on several of those properties. The new grant has several goals. It's a lot similar to the 2013 Community-Wide Assessment, except we have a coalition now. We have additional partners and we're planning this together as a community. Property selection, site assessment, cleanup planning, regulatory review, which is an important part because it's not cheap. The federal funding pays the state to review the properties. And sometimes, the regulatory fees are higher than the consultant fees for some of these things. So, it's important that the whole process is facilitated. And last but not least, public outreach. You know, we're making sure that whoever wants to be involved with this is involved. It's a three-year project. It's supposed to close out in September 2020. Often, these do get a one-year extension if we need to wrap things up. But our goal is to close it out in three years. We had five properties that were highlighted on the grant application. And I'm going to run through those. These aren't necessarily the properties that we're going to assess. We haven't heard back from all of the owners on all five properties. And we have a list of other properties that are candidates too. But just to give you an idea of how we won the grant, we highlighted some key properties. None of these properties would be assessed in the program unless the landowners say, yeah, we want to be included. And if any of you have ideas about additional properties, we're looking for land in our community. A lot of times, we're looking for infill sites where we've got vacant property, you know, surrounded by existing development or property on the edge of town that is planned for, you know, affordable housing or important industrial development. And it has to, to be selected, it has to fit in with the community plan. We need input from the coalition partners, the planning agencies, community members, our partner organizations. And like I mentioned, we need landowner consent. We need EPA approval. So, it's a process to get the list finalized. But that's, we're getting close on this. We're actually meeting next week to look at our shortlist and, you know, start selecting properties. We're not going to select them all at that point, but just to get started. The old Nevada City Airport is one that we are going to assess. There's been a lot of public interest. It's up north in Nevada City where that blue arrow is up there. It's an old airport, so that in itself is an environmental condition. We want to make sure that there's no contamination there. If there is, we address it. These are some clips from the union. During the last year, the city has had some workshops about what to do with that property. And they've solicited a lot of good public input. So, it's nice to see that community involvement in this process. And we're glad that we can use the EPA funding to move it forward. The Idaho Maryland Mine Property is an important one because it's number one on the EPA site selection list. And it's a prominent property. It's on the edge of town. Ownership has changed since we submitted the grant application. So, we don't know whether this is going to be assessed or not. But, you know, it is a good candidate should the landowner want to assess it. There has been quite a bit of work done on it in the past. Jim performed a preliminary endangerment assessment as part of a previous grant. And so, you know, we have a leg up. And if the property owner is willing, we'd love to include it. It's an important property. Berryman Ranch, we do have landowner consent for. It's not the current, you know, first development area of Berryman. But there are some concerns about environmental conditions in a future stage. And we've been talking to the landowner representative. It is a planned development area. We're leveraging private funding and facilitating reuse of land that, you know, could have some roadblocks to it. And again, you know, it's been in the paper lately. It's something that people are involved with. Sierra Terrace is one that's been on our list for a long time. Again, it's changed hands recently and we haven't talked to the landowner yet. But it does have a lot of assessment. It's right on Main Street and Berry Hill, you know, just down the hill from the Club Sierra. And it's an old mine ore processing site. And the purple dirt that you see there in the bottom right-hand corner is basically waste from that ore processing. And so, it has elevated arsenic and lead in it. And Matson Creek runs right through it in a box culvert. So, there's potential to leverage funding from EPA for cleanup and for waterway protection funding. And it sure would make a great park in the middle of town. So, we're hoping that we get a hold of the landowner and see if we can move this one forward. Boma Erickson Toms, you should talk about.
Okay. Boma Erickson Toms property is adjacent to the Idaho Maryland Mine. And it is not a former mine property, except that in the southeastern corner, it also had a sulfur at works like the Sierra Terrace property. And so, there are some high levels of some metals contamination there. But we did a preliminary endangerment assessment of the remainder of the property. There had been a significant amount of environmental testing done on this property over the years. And we basically looked at the existing data set, filled in data gaps, did a little more sampling to go out and down from identified hotspots. And we basically assembled all the pre-existing data, our data, into a comprehensive preliminary endangerment assessment and Removal Action Work Plan. That was the one Removal Action Work Plan that we were able to do under the 2013 grant. See, do we have a, just some pictures of the property. It also had the former Narrow Gage Railroad running through it. And we actually came up with what we think is a good alternative for cleanup for this site. And that Removal Action Work Plan document with all the data for the site is with the Department of Toxics now. They've reviewed it. They've commented on it. We're responding to their comments right now. And when we get to the document to the stage that they're happy with it, it'll go out for public review. And so, that portion of the process will happen under the 2017 grant. Now, you talk about that one.
Empire Meadows is adjacent to the South Auburn Street property that I mentioned for the 2013 grant. And it shares the same wetland, so it has that same condition. And so, the intention here is to assess this property and share the cleanup strategy with both. It basically doubles the size of our, you know, our land that can be put back to use and developed. And so, it has a lot of past development efforts within EIR. We have a lot of good information on it. We've already performed assessment on the adjacent property and some on this property as well. So, I think this one is a great candidate for assessment under the new grant. These voters are from the South Auburn Street property, but, you know, it's the same wetland area. So, that is it for the talk. I just want to remind everybody that this is all coming from U.S. EPA. It's all funded by EPA and couldn't do without them. And I have some contact information up here for Tom and I. And also, the city of Grass Valley website, the Sierra Fund website have good information. And I'm going to open it up to questions if anybody wants to ask questions or I'd be happy to meet individually afterwards too. Thank you. Oh, that's right. Okay, so, because it's being broadcast, we're asking people with questions to come up and speak into the mic so it can be recorded.
Hi, have you given any thought to a citizens advisory committee or some sort of community? I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand because you didn't talk much about it as far as more specifically, the community outreach process. And there are people in the community that have technical knowledge and just trying to figure out a way to make that all work.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We haven't incorporated an advisory committee into this project. We do have the coalition group. And then, we have a working group that is comprised of the regulatory agencies, the county and EPA and the CalEPA DTSC. And so, it might be possible to combine that working group with some, you know, citizen input at that time as well. We were picturing that the community input would kind of be organic, you know, call Jason or Tom and, you know, give us your ideas. But maybe a more formalized approach would be useful too.
Well, I just had the thought that this is a pretty dynamic process. Clearly, you're still trying to identify properties and action plans and such. And so, it's an evolving project. And so, I'm just trying to understand the process that's going to be used to keep people engaged that have an interest in following this as you go through milestones and as decisions are made.
Yeah, and Kelsey and I were talking about that yesterday. And we will follow up with an email regarding the initial site selection. If you've signed up on the signup sheet, you'll be included in all the email correspondence. We are going to post things to the website, but I'm open to suggestions offline if you want to talk more about that.
Thanks.
I'm sure. I'm Roger Funston.
By Mr. Breakup here, who I will point out is from our watershed. Yuba definitely rolls down the hill and I don't consider you from, you know... Yeah, you're in the watershed. And GeoCon's been a great partner for years now trying to figure this out. I wanted to just comment on what Roger just said. The Sierra Fund is looking for ways to involve the public. That's one reason why we organized this event. It's why we fed you just in case you're going to be hangry when you get here. But more to the point, what Grass Valley is doing here is very brave. It's very unusual. This is the first area in the United States that's gotten Brownfield money for mines garden lands. And there, Grass Valley, GeoCon, all of us here together are inventing how we respond to this. I look over and see former council member Chauncey Poston, a soil conservation scientist, realtor, who was one of the first people who taught me about these mines garden lands. So, Roger, I think that's an interesting idea. I'm not sure it's really necessarily here. I think that's a suggestion that the city council might want to consider, Howard. Is there a role for some sort of citizens advisory committee? I'm not sure. It's kind of tricky. It's people's private property and they're kind of itchy and scratchy about people looking over their shoulder about their property. That being said, the Sierra Fund has been working towards having these community dialogues. It was the purpose of this event. And we also could move forward with our own, you know, complementary project. At the minimum, we have an annual conference. It will be next year where we gather people to talk about these sorts of things. And we hold regularly community events. We're going to be holding another one in the fall on community health issues. So, I wanted to say there's a variety of ways to get involved. But it's certainly something that, a suggestion that we should bubble up to the city council and see if it would make their job. After all, this is about helping the city and the individuals in it face this extremely interesting, complicated, somewhat scary topic.
I'd like to add one quick statement about that regarding precedent for that sort of thing for community advisory groups. I've been working with Brownfield's communities and grants all over the state for several years now. And every community is different in how they handle their grants and how they handle the outreach to the public and how the public comes back and interfaces with the community. I've been to these types of meetings in urban centers where nobody shows up. And that's probably because we didn't have a Sierra Fund-type organization getting the word out well enough. And also, because especially if you're maybe in a little more suburban environment, sometimes it's like, I'm busy. You know, people just don't have the involvement. So, it's great that you have that level of concern for your community. And there are, especially when you get down into like the Bay Area arena or Los Angeles or San Diego, there's definitely more precedent for community advisory groups to form and to be involved through the public process. So, I think the way you said, it's like through city council and through people like you. If that's the way everybody wants to go for public outreach and public involvement, then that does happen on other Brownfields grants.
Bob Branstrom from Grass Valley. Just a point of clarification. Grass Valley describes both mailing addresses and the city of Grass Valley. And I want to be clear, when you're talking about Grass Valley here, you're talking about the legal entity of the city. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. The site selection covers the, you know, the broader Grass Valley community. But it's really going to be focused on, you know, long-term redevelopment planning. And so, I think the closer you are to the community center, you know, sometimes it makes it more fundable.
It may include the greater Grass Valley area.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And Nevada City. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, we, I mean, Nevada City clearly, one of the sites we clearly are going to assess is going to be the Nevada City Airport. That was part of the, you know, that was part of their priority of their involvement. They wanted some additional work and it provided a great opportunity for us to work together on that. Yes.
Hi, my name is Rob Katzenstein and I live in Grass Valley downtown. And I'm a member and current president of a nonprofit called The Clean Power Co-op of Nevada County. And our interest is in the Idaho Maryland Mine site and the Boma Erickson Toms property next door. And I was ecstatic to hear that there is actually the raw plan for that property. And I'm curious, is that public? And are the dollar figures available for what the cleanup would entail on that? I don't know if you want to speak?
It will be. It will be. We're in the part of the process right now where the document, the draft document is with the Department of Toxic Substances Control, DTSC. They're reviewing, they're, the city of Grass Valley is in a voluntary cleanup agreement with the DTSC. That's actually a contract for the DTSC to be the state's oversight agency. So, the DTSC is reviewing that document. They've already commented. We're responding to their comments. We'll create what's called a draft final raw Removal Action Work Plan. Then that is when it goes out to public review and comment for 30 days. So, and yes, to further answer your question, yes, that document will have, it'll have the cleanup alternatives, which one is selected as the best fit for the property and for the community and what the sort of dollar amounts are and why one alternative is selected over another.
All right, thank you. There do seem to be a lot of acronyms involved in this process.
Oh, we could throw a lot more at you.
But what I was, where I'm sort of going with this is we're hoping that the city of Grass Valley will develop that area as a potential solar field, either commercial or for the city of Grass Valley consumption. And it's ideally sited close to the substation and... And it's ideally sited, um, close to the substation and power lines. And if it was to be cleaned up for that, maybe that would be a more minimal use in terms of not being a residential development or commercial development, but just sort of leave the land as is and develop a solar field there. So, uh, to me, that seems like the best use of the property with a difficult cleanup. So I'd like to suggest that.
Okay, I can say one thing about the removal action work plan. The actual proposed cleanup is, it's a pretty conceptual sort of cleanup. And it doesn't say, oh, put houses here and put commercial industrial here and put, you know, a school over here. It doesn't get to that sort of level of detail. So what you're talking about in terms of your suggested, uh, land use, it's open to a wide variety of different land uses. So that, the, the cleanup that's proposed, once it's done, it's like, there'll be a lot of options for what you could do with the property.
Well, would the cleanup, a, a follow-up might be, um, are there levels of cleanup that you have to do depending on varied uses? If the city decided that there was going to be no public access to this land or that it was going to be used for power generation, would that necessitate less cleanup than a residential development or a commercial development?
It could, potentially. Yeah, that's something that would be considered for sure.
All right, thank you.
And also just to follow up on the documents, um, there's a 30-day public review, but then once the documents are finalized, they're on DTSC's website.
Yeah.
And they become public information. So you go to the EnviroStore website and you can look on the map and find them.
Maybe. There'll be the DTSC's, uh, online database, which is called EnviroStore. You'll be able to access it there. Then there should be hard copies somewhere like City Hall, a library, school, something like that. There should be different places the public can get to the document, but most people have online access now and you could get to it like that. Yeah.
Jason, you may want to, I mean, we, I think since I've been here, we've had one, um, public, where DTSC's had a very strong public outreach with the, um, like, um, on the, on the south, property on East Main Street. You may want to talk about that process. They, I mean, they, they really talk, they, they work with the city of Grass, they actually lead this public outreach effort. You may just want to talk about what they do and their efforts, and it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, it is. And, and over the years, the Department of Toxics has developed a pretty robust, um, public outreach department and sequoia department and lots of other things. But they, um, they do take charge for the public outreach. Um, a lot of times we'll assist them in the mailings and, and the, um, the community contacts. There'll be a, a radius for public mailings around the cleanup plan area. And, um, they do pretty routinely now send out a questionnaire and then ask for comments back. And, um, like Jim's been talking about, it does go to, uh, the repositories. And so it, it, the, the outreach is pretty robust. For most of the cleanup plans that we do in the local area, they're not, um, they're not contentious. Everybody knows that, you know, it's a good thing we're cleaning up this property. But if there are concerns, they'll also hold a public meeting specifically for, you know, for the cleanup plan.
You gave us an idea, oh, sorry, Chauncey Poston, Grass Valley. Could you give us an idea on the ratio of funding available for assessment and actual cleanup?
You mean for the EPA?
Well, you have two phases. One, one is finding the problem, assessing the problem, and then cleaning it up. So the two pots of money?
It is, it is. I can't answer that question. I don't know, but it wouldn't be too hard to find the answer to that. What, uh, what is set aside in EPA's grant programs for assessment and cleanup? To get a cleanup, you have to be the owner of the property, uh, to get a cleanup grant. Um, but that's a good question. We'll have to, uh, research that.
Okay. So my next question is, uh, so you identify a property and you produce a cleanup plan and you do the cleanup. Is that a cost share with the landowner or is that going to be 100% funded?
Very good question. They're typically a cost share because usually, uh, in the case of these brownfields grants, uh, the cleanup grants, if a city gets it, and the city has to own the property to get a cleanup grant for it, and then generally the EPA will ask for 20% matching funds. But in the case of many, many communities, all they have to do is express that, uh, they either can't, they can't afford to do the matching or they can't provide enough in-kind services and EPA will waive that in many cases. So it's generally a negotiated, worked-out situation with EPA.
Okay.
But again, for cleanup, you have to be the owner of the property.
Jim, isn't, as far as, I'll just maybe clarify also, um, I think get it for private persons owning property, the cleanup grant's much more harder to get or even it's very restricted compared to like a government entity owning property. I'm not sure, is there, do you know the difference between some of that, private versus a city requesting a cleanup grant?
It would have to be a, a public entity or a nonprofit, yeah.
Last one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but all the sites that you identified, are they privately held?
Actually, different sorts of, of funding available for private property owners that have properties that are mine scarred in some way through these brownfields programs. If there's going to be a, again, if it's community redevelopment, a beneficial public use, um, and there's going to be, uh, low income loan, I mean, low interest loans, sometimes, um, no interest loans, sometimes the EPA will bring targeted brownfields assistance. They're, they're not going to give you any money, but they might help you with some of the assessment or maybe some of the legal issues. So there is, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not a gift of cash. It's sometimes, um, just these better, these sort of better services. And we've seen that most particularly useful in places like the city of San Francisco. If you own an old dead gasoline station in the middle of San Francisco and it's this little nothing, it's, it's, and it's slightly contaminated, boy, you put, you clean that thing up a little bit and it turns into a high-rise, that's a huge return on investment. So that's, that's how this model has developed is in big cities where a little, a little contribution to clean it up is, people are concerned about the liability. So this sort of takes care of that liability issue and then it turns into big money. Why it's so important and as I said, why we really need to support our little city here and our little city of Grass, of Nevada City and our little county, um, as somebody mentioned, there's more planning department staff in Los Angeles County than there probably are all of the staff of all of the entities I just mentioned. So we don't have very many resources up here. We have to help them figure this out. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. Help them figure out, and if there are services for the non, for the, for the for-profit property owners that are trying to help our city fill these holes and build houses and have businesses, we all want to try to find those resources.
I would point out also, Chauncey, the city did in the 2009 grant and then the 2013 grants, we did look at city-owned properties and then potential issues that went potentially in the right of way. So with those two grants, we covered most of the city, I think every city property that we've had a potential issue with, we studied with previous grants. So that's why the focus is going to be more on private lands and then working with Nevada City on this grant, most likely.
This is to identify, um, sites to be dealt with. What about ones that are already known to exist to be problem sites that are already flagged and obvious to the naked eye that there's a problem?
Yeah, certainly if, if, if there are landowners that have identified problem sites, we'd, you know, we'd love to put them on the list of candidates.
And then with the, um, changeover of properties, like if there was toxic material on a property and it changed hands, um, that's disclosed with the new owner, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not, uh, not a real estate attorney, but...
But that falls on their, I mean, it's their problem then at that point, is that right?
Well, I think that's a, that's a complicated one as far as, uh, you know, who is the responsible party? And there are big cleanup sites where there's a, you know, a formalized potential responsible party search and, uh, you know, it could turn into a legal battle. We don't do that kind of stuff, uh, up here for the most part. The, um, state parks identified that Newmont Mining Corporation was a responsible party at the Empire Mine. And so they're sharing in the costs to address that site. But, uh, for your typical smaller brownfields property, we don't, we don't get into, you know, pointing the finger.
That's the Empire Site on South Auburn?
At the state park.
The brownfield site within the state park or the brownfield site on the South Auburn property just outside the state park?
Oh, uh, the, uh, the state park is the subject of a similar assessment. And, uh, state parks and the mining corporation are, are both working on that one.
On the one on South Auburn?
Not, but on the Village of South Auburn property, that is not being looked at or there's no...
No.
That's strictly the city looking at that, not...
Right. Yeah, that is just a, a, a site in the brownfields program.
As you mentioned, it is a big asset to develop and it just seems that it was downstream from the cyanide plant and just walking out on the land, you can see the material that came out of the mine just on the surface there everywhere. And, uh, now it's burned. So as we go through this process, is it a process of this is less toxic, so it'd be better to clean this place up first? Or is it this is more valuable to the city as far as location, so we would prefer to clean this place up first? Even if it would take more money?
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's a judgment call.
Prioritization process?
Yeah, that, it, it all works into the site selection process. You know, yes, it's good to pick some low-hanging fruit so we have success stories and, and we put them back on the tax roll. But there are other sites like the Sierra Terrace property where it's a good candidate for cleanup funding. Um, you know, if it, if the, uh, if a public agency were to own it and turn it into a park, um, so it goes both ways.
And there's, I think one of you gentlemen might know about a, a spot up on, I believe it's Carroll Street on, near, is it Doris and Carroll where they come together, just up on North Church Street there?
Right, right.
And I was at the county today asking them about that toxic pile of dirt that's known to be toxic. It's been a, the cover's been blowing off on it for 10 or 12 years. And it was supposed to be removed by the previous developer that discovered it was toxic and then left it. Now it's changed hands to a new developer and the house right next door is for sale. And I'm just wondering if that's going to be dealt with at all.
Yeah, I think it was discussed during the transaction and it, that it's, it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not a really hot pile, but yeah, it needs to be dealt with. But, but I, I think that the new owner is likely aware that they need to deal with it. I don't know the details on that one.
I guess is what I'm getting at. So these grandfathered in things, like you buy a toxic piece of land, someone knows it's toxic, they want to get rid of it, they sell it for super cheap, and you're, some developers can just go, yeah, I'll get to that whenever I get to it.
Right.
But yet we still have to drink, because it's right on the creek, we still have to breathe what blows off of it for the past, you know, dozen years. As the developed, the original developer found that it was too, too hot to touch, and that's why the development stopped.
Yeah. I know that particular pile is not super hot. It has some garbage in it. But I, I, I see your point. It's a complicated situation.
What I'm getting at, I guess, is that's a known thing, that's a complicated situation that's been there for 10 years or more, yet we're trying to develop and find new spots to clean up. And I know that we know spots that are already identified over and over.
That pile just needs to be removed. It doesn't need to be assessed or planned or anything. They just need to remove it.
How do we go about that?
Uh, it's kind of outside of my area.
The county today told me to talk to you specifically.
Oh, well, perhaps for information because we, we tested the pile.
Yep.
And, and so I can tell you that we tested it and it needs to be hauled off, but it's not, you know, it's not a glowing pile of toxic waste.
So where does it go from there? You've tested it, you say, oh, this needs to be hauled off. You give that to the property owner? Or does that go to the county or the city? Or does it just stop with you guys and it never gets hauled off? Because that's the problem. There's a breakdown in the system where we're not getting the toxic stuff out, that it's all over the place.
Yeah, it sounds like a philosophical question. Um, and I'm a consultant, so I kind of stay away from that part.
How do we connect the guys doing the testing with the county that's supposed to be doing the enforcement?
Old County.
I was there face-to-face today and they said, "Talk to you guys."
Well, again, we, we are, Matt, Matt, we're, we're doing an assessment grant where we're assessing properties. We're not forcing people to clean them up. That's not, that's not what this assessment grant does. If we identify issues on property, we then, we, we provide a path forward for a private individual to clean that property up. We don't force them to clean it up. If we know if a property has significant contamination and we identify that with this process, this assessment grant, we'll develop a plan for them to say, okay, this is how you move forward to get this property cleaned up. We're not going to force them. The city does not do that. We're not forced them to clean them up. This is an assessment grant only. So you need to understand there's a difference there between what we're doing versus potential long-term enforcement or some other mechanism to get property cleaned up. That's not what this is intended to do.
You know, on properties that are deemed basically, like the one off on Bennett that are deemed not to be, uh, buildable immediately, I mean, there's dozens of people living on that land illegally right now and drinking the water and, and living out there. And if some of these places are too toxic for them to develop, it seems like they'd be too toxic to have people living out there in the dirt. Thank you.
I would, I would just like, as a point of clarification, explain just a teeny bit about Toxics policy. I'm the policy wonk, engineer, scientist, policy wonk. And the, the difference is, we know, we, we know, we have Superfund site, uh, right here, um, the Banner Lava Cap site is a Superfund site where the owners of that property did what's called an emission. They had a Clean Water Act violation, um, the little tailings dam burst open, all that junk rolled off their property when they're on other people's private property. And as a result of that, that was a Clean Water Act violation. It became a Superfund site. Sadly for the individuals that were involved in that, not only had they failed to maintain their debris control dams they should have, they also had failed to tell their investors that they were buying mine scarred property. And so those guys are now facing serious legal problems because they failed to reveal that there was mine scarred property. So you've raised, Matthew, a number of different issues which sort of get tangled up and pulling them apart. The sale of property only triggers cleanup if there's a condition that's considered an emission. If it has a Clean Water Act liability on it, you're going to have to clean it up whether you did it or not. It's like that thing where the kids are in the backseat and you don't care who started it, but you know who's going to stop it. We don't care who did the clean water emission. You stop it if you own the property, you bought it. If however, it's a soil condition which is not leaving the property, there's a whole different set of rules about soil. I know it seems insane that there's a different sets of rules than from, for water than soil. There's even different regulatory agencies that aren't necessarily that familiar with each other that work on these two issues. So if the only real issue is soil contamination, it's not leaving the property, there's no emission, although there are sensitive populations on the property. There could be butterflies, there could be humans. Matthew, I just wanted to be clear to the rest of the folks rather than engaging in one pile in one spot. We all live on top of, of abandoned mines. So if there is no emission, just speaking about what the law is, the property owner is in a position where they can't subdivide it. They can't develop it, they can't do a project under sequoia without abating that hazard. But they are not forced by law to clean up the property. They are not forced by law to, to put guards around the property to not let anybody walk on their property where the contamination is. If people are trespassing on property, that is a problem. Sierra Fund's very concerned about it. It's why things like Sierra Terrace are a high priority for all of us to figure out how do we, because we all walk out there. Everybody's walking their dogs, everybody's riding their bikes. We need to identify, we need to abate. But there's just these various different complicated elements of law. It's not logical necessarily, but this is the two big distinctions, soil versus water versus air quality emissions, which are again, really outside of the, the boundaries of anything, anything we're talking about.
But just briefly, and that Bennett Street, it runs between Wolf Creek and, uh, South Park Wolf Creek. So one side of the drainage of all that property goes into one creek, one... So one side of the drainage of all that property goes into one creek, one side of it all goes into the other creek.
What else?
Thank you. Good discussion. Do you want to wrap it up?
Sure.
I'm Kelsey. I'm with the Sierra Fund. We're doing the public outreach component of this grant. And as you guys know, as you've heard tonight, it is a three-year grant. We'll be hosting a series of these meetings over the grant period and we want to keep in touch with you. So if you didn't get a chance to sign in on the sign-in sheets on the table outside, please do so. Please give us a way to reach out with you, whether that's email address or phone number. And like Roger, if you have ideas on how you want to stay involved in this process over time, let us know. We do have some evaluation sheets out there as well so we can kind of gauge what your knowledge of, um, this project was coming in, what it is going out after this public meeting, if you got your questions answered, if you want to make additional comments on anything that we didn't talk about tonight, feel free to do so. We love your input. I think we can all agree that that's why we live in a community like this because we have people that come out to these meetings and, um, want to be involved and stay engaged. And so if you have ideas, let us know and we want to keep in touch. Thank you.
Good work, Kelsey.
I guess that was the last slide. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We'll be around for another 20 minutes. You know, there's snacks out there. Go ahead and we can talk in the foyer. Jason and Jim will be here for technical support on the, some of the technical studies they will be doing and conducting. The next step that we will be doing as staff in the coalition, we, as Jason indicated, next week we'll be coming together to start refining that list of properties that we'll be focused on. And there's, besides the list that Jason showed you, the city, and this community has collected a pretty extensive list of properties that we have an idea where contamination could be. So we have a, another list to work from. But again, we're always looking for interested property owners. And, you know, we, we have to have property owner consent to make this a successful process, too. So if there's other properties you want to bring to our attention, please do so. Again, we'll be here for another half hour or so. And, uh, thank you all for coming.
I think you guys need to start working on your choreography. There's sort of a, you know, there's swirls. Really nice.